Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to Albany City Council Meeting Work Session on 21st of October at 4:00 P.M. I now call the meeting to order. Could you please give us a roll call, Allison?
Counselor Madigoo.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Here.
Counselor McGee. Counselor Novak.
Here.
Counselor Neazor. Counselor Kupczynski.
Here.
Mayor Johnson II.
Here.
No, I mean, she didn't call you. Allison didn't call you? Did you mention her?
Yes, she did.
Oh, she did, okay. Thank you. At this time, we have business from the public. We have one person that signed up, Patrick Wenzuski. Did I spell that right again?
It's Wenceski.
Wenceski, I'm sorry. Thank you.
You're right.
You have three minutes, sir.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Patrick Wenceski. I am a founder of the Albany Mushroom Festival. And tomorrow marks four weeks from our very successful first-year event, and I wanted to tell you all about it. With our final estimates being around 8,000 to 10,000 people attending this event, we consider it an absolute success, a resounding success. People traveled from all over Oregon, the Pacific Northwest, and we had some special international visitors come to Albany for this festival. We had over 100 small local businesses, artisans, nonprofits, food trucks participate and share our success. Many said that it was one of the most successful events they have ever vended at. Many of our food trucks sold out. And there's just seeing the incredible response from the community and these vendors was really excellent to see. Like you, I want to see Albany flourish. And I believe that free, family-friendly, community events like the Albany Mushroom Festival are what our city needs. These events draw well-needed attention and tourism to our great city. And it's something that I am really proud of and believe in wholeheartedly. I would like to thank some people today. I'd like to thank our main sponsor, Urban Egg Supply, for supporting this event. I would like to thank the many businesses downtown, like Cibres Bistro, Camille's, South Paws Pizza, and several others who participated in Mushroom Week, which included making mushroom-specific menus in celebration for our event. You can talk to each of them. It was a very resounding success for them, and it was so great to see local businesses in the community come together in celebration of something that we all believe in. I would like to thank Counselor Steph Newton for her continued support throughout this process. And I would especially like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for coming and celebrating the Mushroom Festival with us. For those of you who don't know, Mayor Johnson came and dressed up with a mayoral staff and a mushroom cap, went to every single one of our vendors, thanked them. And I just have to say, they could not stop talking about you. You brought in much appreciated enthusiasm and kindness to the event, and I so much appreciate you for that. And I really look forward to talking about Mushroom Festival 2025. And I'm looking forward to having the City Council support when we go into planning that. So thank you so much. And if I may, Mayor, I brought you a couple of posters to thank you for participating in our event.
Thank you very much. Would anyone, no one else signed up to talk, speak to the council? Would anyone like three minutes to speak to the council about an issue? Thank you so much. Anyone in chambers? Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is the Arts Commission presentation. Director Kim LaDain and Executive, excuse me, Chair Keith Losch.
Where's Minnie Hatt?
Yes, he does.
I wait.
Okay. I follow your lead.
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Let me make sure I can share. Thank you for your patience. Is it up there? I apologize. Is somebody else sharing the screen? That won't let us do it. Or are you seeing it come up on your screen and I'm just really...
I don't see anything. There comes the maestro.
Thank you all for your patience. Oh. Hot dog. See?
Dr. McGee says she's not hearing anything.
Oh my goodness, technology. Nope. I'm gonna stop sharing. Well... Well, this is embarrassing. I apologize. Let's see.
Screen broadcast is there. There it is.
There we go. Holy moly.
Holy.
Awesome. I can hear you guys.
Woo! Okay. Hi. Thank you all so much for your patience this evening. Kim LaDain, Director of Parks and Recreation, and also The Lucky Gal, who is the staff liaison for the Arts Commission. And I am here, and I have the easy job, is I'm just gonna turn it over to our Chair, Keith Losch, who's been with the Commission for several years. I also want to acknowledge that we have several of our Arts Commission members here in support, as it's been a while since this group has, well, I think this is actually the first time this Commission's ever come forward to counsel. They've been incredibly busy over the past few years and should be really proud of their accomplishments. And so in order to kind of pat, well, I feel like we need to pat ourselves on the back, themselves on the back, they are here to tell you a little bit more about everything that's going on and hopefully get some ideas as to what the future can hold.
All right. Thank you, Council, once again, for having the Arts Commission come out today. So the Arts Commission, actually, we're gonna do a little bit of history, because I do run the Albany Regional Museum, so gotta do a little bit of history. It started in 1995 as the City Hall Arts Task Force. So this was as the current City Hall was being built. It was determined it was, it would be a good idea to have a task force to come in with some specialists to help put up a beautification project inside. Currently, we still have seven members. You can see them on the screen there. Everybody that is on the Commission is an artist, with the exception of myself. I'm an arts administrator. And it's a pretty, pretty good team of people. So the prior Art Master Plan was established to bring in a beautification of City Hall, and it had five kind of core tenets to it. Integrating art into the architecture of City Hall, illustrating the building's importance to civic life, one of the key factors, reflecting the history of the community, incorporating light and movement, and then, my favorite, sparking curiosity and interest. It gives people a very fun feeling and a bigger sense of community when they come to City Hall and they have artwork here that they can kind of appreciate and represent the city. The Master Plan included a call to artists. It went out to over 350 people. Twenty-five applicants responded, and the committee, at that time, recommended 10 of the pieces to purchase to go into City Hall initially. The value of that was about $38,000. They sought out sponsors and did some fundraising, and they were able to be able to do that initial investment. The collection, the permanent collection, has continued to grow based on mostly donations of artists here in town that have come forward and said they would like to have a piece here permanently. So just a selection of some of the permanent pieces. You've probably seen these as you've done your meetings throughout City Hall. We have Rich Bergman's photo of the Flynn Block Staircase. The Victorian Garden by Dorothy Hagerty in the Periwinkle Room. And then Winter's Return by Devon Rowe, who is actually a very big name in the arts field, I learned recently, and has some strong ties to Albany. And I know that I've had some conversations. This piece probably gets interacted with the most, because people tend to move it. It's on a pedestal that'll turn. Not that you should. So since then, we've come forward pretty far. We've came to you a little over a year ago, requesting kind of a change to our charge, just refining it to make us stronger when we go forward, grants and the like. And so our current charge is that the Albany Arts Commission believes that art enriches the physical, economic, social, and cultural well-being of a community. The Commission seeks to implement inspiring, diverse, and creative public art opportunities with equal, inclusive, and accessible access to the public through the gallery at City Hall and other public venues. And what does that translate to? What do we actually do? So we have quite a bit of programming. Before the current members, there was the Container Art Program. We ended up retiring that, but the pieces that were wrapped are still out in the community, so that is still present. The monthly rotation of artists at City Hall is our biggest event. We have, we also have, this year, fortunate enough, we got a grant to be able to host a monthly arts reception. And so that's been going really well for the last seven months. And then we manage the City Hall Permanent Gallery. There's not a whole lot that we've done with that, but we've been planning on potentially rotating some things, make people become more aware. If you have the same meeting in the same room all the time, you're not seeing all the pieces unless we rotate them, so working on that. We review public art donations. We've had two this past year. One was declined, and I think we're still working on the other. We fundraise. There's quite a few events that we've been doing. We've been at Antiques in the Streets. One of our commissioners held a birthday party, and she hosted it as a fundraiser for the Commission. We've been to the Lynn County Flea Market, Albany Pride, we had a booth at. And then just our monthly First Fridays have a donation box as well. Go forward. Okay. So the biggest project, as I mentioned, is managing the gallery at City Hall. And so we have an ongoing call for artists. And I would ask City Council members, you're all very well-connected people. If you know any artists, these are the requirements here. They need to provide us a sample of work. It must include a short bio. If they're a part of a guild or anything like that, they would be encouraged to apply as the whole guild. We would treat them as one artist and look at and review them all together. And then they may be up for one month or two months, depending on our current applicant pool, although we have been fortunate that we've been able to do monthly rotations for the last two years. And then artists submit pieces for review each, well, not each year. Yes, each year, if they're reapplying. So if they've applied before, they need to reapply and submit if it's been more than a year. There we go. So please share that if you know anyone. The gallery itself is quite a bit of work. There is the getting people recruited to apply, the installation day, the deinstallation day, and then our First Friday receptions. Since 2022, we've had over 100 artists actually show here in City Hall, which is amazing. And that is a direct correlation to the efforts that Commission members have put out to go and recruit artists from across the county and even beyond. We've had artists from as far away as Portland actually come and put pieces down here. And then, as part of the highlighting what we do, because not enough people, I think, realize that there is a gallery at City Hall, I mentioned we did get the grant to do the First Friday receptions. And so you can see, we put up a nice little table. We cover the cost of having the security guards stay open late. It also ties us into the broader civic community, because First Friday in downtown has become a significant thing over the last couple of years. So what does it take to do all of these things I've been talking about? And it's quite a bit of time. So we meet monthly, as many of the city advisory groups do, but we do tend to run long with ours. We've been dealing with a lot of interesting topics. Occasionally, a controversial piece comes in front of us. Recently, we've also had some debates about how to handle AI art, because it is a thing that is growing in the arts field broadly. We haven't had to deal with it directly yet, but we want to be ready for it. The commissioners have spent a collective of about 500 hours in the last year, which two of them deserve specific call-outs. Maddie McGregor has contributed about 128, almost 130 hours, working First Friday events, being at the informational booths, and helping to organize a lot of our fundraising efforts. And then Lisa Bright, who serves as the Vice Chair to the Commission, is also our gallery coordinator. She puts in, on average, about 20 hours a month. And a lot of that is really just dealing with the gallery itself. Those installation days can run long. Staying in communication with all the artists takes up a lot of time. And she was recently the recipient of the Volunteer of the Year by the city. So thank you for recognizing her and her efforts. So as a reminder, we actually do not have a line item in the city budget. We do all this work just off of our own fundraising projects. This year, funds totaled 4,257. So that comes, 1,500 of that is from kind of donations fundraisers that we've run. We had an $1,800 grant. We did have a second grant that's not totaled here. We unfortunately had to recently return that, because the project that it was tied to just wasn't coming together. So we wanted to maintain a good relationship with that funder. And then we do have commission on sales made with art that's showing here at City Hall. And we had 12 pieces sell in the last year, totaling about $923 on our commission. Now, you might have expected it when I brought up fundraising and that we don't have a line item. The Commission would really appreciate, as a call to action, if you would consider including us in the budget somewhere. It doesn't have to be a huge amount, but as you can see, we brought in about $4,000 this last year. And we are charged with the maintenance of the City Hall gallery, which we have recently started talking about what that actually looks like, because nobody has ever done any sort of restoration or preservation work on the pieces we currently own. We would also like to expand that collection so that we can rotate pieces and change things. We are currently kind of housed within the Parks and Rec Department, but you can look where you need to, to find whatever that might be, if you would be willing to consider us. We noted that compared to similar-sized cities, we lag a little bit in terms of public art. So excluding the permanent collection that's housed in the City Hall itself, we only have about nine public art pieces that are sponsored by the city in some fashion. Compared to, and this is information based on these cities' websites, Corvallis has 55 for a comparable population. Florence has eight matching us, and they only have just under 10,000 people. Tigard has 30, again, being very similar size. And I won't go through that whole list, but you can kind of see, we're lagging a little behind. And we would not be able to kind of help catch up and show the city how much art means to us without some support from Council. Okay. So made the call to action. Now for something a little more fun. We have a new initiative that we're starting tonight. October is National Arts and Humanities Month. This is an initiative by the Americans for the Arts to help increase arts awareness broadly. At least one of their three goals for the month. And when we started talking about this as a commission, we thought it would be best to help raise awareness around the arts. And we thought one of the most positive impacts we could make is to recognize local artists or arts advocates, or even just the arts organizations. So we landed on two categories. One is for individual artist or arts advocate. And the second one is an arts organization or an arts-based event. We had a ton of nominations, particularly in the arts organization category. Albany is fortunate to have quite a few of these groups around. And we did keep, as we did our voting, we kept our charge at top of mind, who is making things most accessible to our local community. So I would like to invite the mayor to come down and help me hand out. We have a couple of our awardees here with us. So for our first category, we actually ended up having a tie. We had two amazing individual artists that have contributed a lot over the last year to the arts community. Eileen Ingle, who is a local muralist, was selected. She did work with the Chamber of Commerce and also sought grants to be able to put up murals just all on her own. She was not able to be with us today, so we'll give that award to her at the time. The second person that got the rest of the votes on the tie is Stephanie Lowe. And I do believe she is here with us. As they're getting ready to take photos. Stephanie has been a public unpaid member of the greater Albany arts community and volunteered numerous hours to support arts in all its forms. She brought nearly 30 artists together to show at City Hall. And they did amazingly. We had about 100 people at that reception on that First Friday, which was amazing. And then that next day, on that Saturday, those artists actually were partnered with various businesses throughout the city, and they showed there and had an arts walk. This was back in May. She's very persistent. She set a vision, set a goal, and she got it done, and that is why we nominated her for this. Our last awardees are for the group events. We have quite a few nominations here. Many amazing groups, like Galway Kalapuyia, the Albany Artist Circle, the Daptown Block Party, Albany Carousel and their current and future programs. So many amazing things. But the winner for tonight is the Albany Civic Theater's Youth Camp. And we have their youth program manager, Rebecca, here with us.
All right, thanks. Thank you.
So if you didn't know, the Albany Civic Theater is coming up on its 75th season. It's in its 74th now, I believe. And the youth summer camp has been going on for a couple of years. This year, they had over 100 students apply, as young as eight-year-olds come in. They could not, they didn't have enough capacity to bring them all in. They were able to bring in about 65 of them. Having them work behind the scenes, learning how theater production works, and it was just an amazing thing. It was The Little Mermaid. If you didn't go see it, you missed out. But that is why we nominated them. Such a beautiful program, and it brings a different type of art vibrancy to the city.
And with that, any questions? It's not a question. It's a comment. I just want to say thank you for what you all do. I have attended some of the First Friday gatherings at the, I just forgot the name of, where you show. Sorry, I just forgot the name of the place. But I have enjoyed it very much, and I always love walking into City Hall and seeing the art. And I know some of the artists, and that's always super fun, so thank you.
Thank you.
And I start my First Friday here, and then I walk downtown. So it's really nice seeing the team come together and this commission come together and do this. And it's a really lively event when I come in here and see everybody talking about their different arts pieces. And it's amazing. So thank you very much for the work you guys have done. Thank you both to Civic Theater. And thank you, Lisa, for the dedication and hard work. So again, I really, we all do appreciate you. And I do have one request, but I'll bring it to the commission itself. It's about a piece in City Hall that I'd like to talk about at some point with the commission.
Absolutely.
Fight in words.
What?
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much, De.
Next on tonight's agenda is Jennifer Sapello. And regarding FEMA, Pro-Implementation Compliance Measures, pages four. Well, there's a lot of pages in the packet. Thank you, Director. Jennifer.
Okay. So I'm Jennifer Sapello. I am a planner here at the City of Albany. I am also the floodplain manager for the City of Albany. And tonight, I'm here to talk to you about the FEMA's Pre-Implementation Compliance Measures for the Oregon Biological Opinion. So some background on this information is back in 2009, FEMA was sued by the Portland Autobahn Society and several other environmental groups in Oregon for failing to consult under the ESA, which is the Endangered Species Act, Section 7, which is endangering endangered species. In 2016, the Oregon Biological Opinion was issued and was provided with reasonable prudent alternatives. In 2018, a three-year extension from Disaster Recovery Reform Act was granted. And then on to 2019 to 21, FEMA and the Department of Land Conservation Development, DLCD, and partners developed, sorry, a 2021 Oregon NFIP, which stands for the National Flood Insurance Program, ESA, which is Endangered Species Act Implementation Plan. In 2019, FEMA begins renewed efforts to develop the implementation plan. And in 2023, Notice of Intent of Environmental Impact Statement, EIS, is published. I'm gonna apologize here. There is many acronyms, because it's all federal information. I believe there was a handout that went out that had a little cheat sheet. At any time, if you have any questions, let me know. Okay. So the areas that are subject to the Oregon NFIP BIOP are 31 of Oregon's 36 communities. And this applies to more than 250 NFIP participating communities, and that includes cities, counties, and towns. And the City of Albany is within that area. Albany's floodplain itself, this is called the Special Flood Hazard Area, or the 100-Year Flood Plain, consists of approximately 1,458 acres and contains approximately 411 dwellings. The draft plan for the biological opinion focuses on preserving and restoring three main floodplain functions, which are the flood storage, which limits new fill or required compensatory flood storage to offset any new fill, to the water quality, which limits new impervious surface and height in stormwater requirements, and three, repairing vegetation, which restricts the removal of fill or vegetation within 170 feet of a body of water. The draft plan that was submitted and is going through review was to avoid non-water-dependent development in the floodplain. It's the ultimate goal. At the time, FEMA had told Oregon that we would not be doing pre-implementation measures, but then come July 15th of this year, a letter was issued by FEMA declaring that we will be doing pre-implementation measures. And these options, we have three options we'll talk about in a minute, we have to decide on them by December 1st of this year, and then start tracking and reporting of January 31st of 2025. These options include adopting the Model Ordinance Language that contains impact to species and their habitat requires mitigation to a no-net-law standard. That is in your agenda packet. Both options are 48 pages. Sorry, it's so long. The second options require habitat assessment and mitigate for floodplain development on a permit-by-permit basis, or prohibit all development in the floodplain. Those are your three options. Do you have any questions? Do you have any questions on those three options yet? Okay, I'll keep going then. So pre-implementation compliance measures, the model ordinance, there's pros and cons to each. At the end of the day, each option has the same ending. The model ordinance is developed based on the current Oregon model ordinance that was recently added to our code a few months ago, includes performance standards to adjust protection of species and habitat that will affect the no-net loss, and includes mitigation ratios. The permit-by-permit habitat assessment, each applicant must develop a habitat assessment documenting that their proposed development will achieve no net loss. FEMA has released a habitat assessment guidance that provides methodology in conducting the review for the assessment. This also includes mitigation ratios. Both plans have the same mitigation ratios, there's no difference in those. And then the third option is prohibiting development, which would be all development in the floodplain, and it would be FEMA's definition, so any ground movement or any improvements to property. So that would include, if you were a home, if you wanted to add an AC unit or a deck, that would be considered development. Just want to make that very clear, what that all complies. And so as we discuss these options, please feel free to let me know what you would like to see. We're scheduled another meeting for November 18 to come before you again to pick which option we're going to turn into FEMA and go forward with our community. But anything you would like to see at next meeting, let me know, if you would like more analytical information or anything like that.
So one thing, you want to go first? Somebody?
I do have something to say.
Okay, reading through it, some of the choices, we only get three, basically, seem rather draconian. And if I have to pick one, I would say the item B, which was the one where each developer would have to come up with their assessment, because that seems to me would be more fair. It gives them more options rather than being cookie-cuttered into X, Y, or Z. Am I misreading that, or?
No, so it does. While we have this document for habitat assessment, I did attend a training on Thursday, and FEMA mentioned that they will be reissuing that habitat assessment guidance in November. So it is currently evolving, but the plan, the intent is each property for their development would have to provide that habitat assessment. And that can be more flexible for someone who's, let's say, doing a patio versus someone who's doing a large subdivision.
But you're saying they're going to come up with new guidelines in November? We still have the end of December to make a choice, or is that?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
Counselor Novak.
Yeah, as far as that goes, this letter was received in mid-July. Why are we waiting until October and November for something that we have to decide on by December 1?
So we got the letter July 15. We did not get the model ordinance or the habitat assessment guidance until mid-October.
Well, that explains that.
Counselor McGee.
Yeah, I guess I have a question on the permit-by-permit basis option. To me, that sounded like it would be more administrative work and burden on the city as far as like having to review individualized plans where the model ordinance seemed like it was more, like it would be less of a burden. But I guess that's my question is, which one is going to be easier for us to administer?
At the end, they end up looking exactly the same. One has just language which is not very clear and no additional guidance on what that language means. Habitat assessment, you're able to use the guidance tool, which is a little bit more clear. But at the end, your mitigation ratios, which is going to tell you how much you have to do, will be the same, and it'll limit or create creative opportunities to develop on your land.
Counselor Smith, you have a comment?
I have a question. Two questions. I want to know, there is a distinction between the floodplain and the floodway. Do we know how much acreage is available, how much acreage those take up, and how much of that, each of those is developable?
I do have some of those numbers. We did report that as part of our CRS. That is something I can get to by November, for the November 18 meeting, just separating what is currently considered developable based on zoning, and then what is actually developable based on what is already built and what's not.
Whenever I think about the floodplain and development therein, I think about the 1996 flood. And anybody who was here at that time will remember it vividly, and it seems like the idea of additional development in areas that flooded that badly is foolhardy, not to mention That was not like the 1964 flood when we didn't have most of the dams that we have now. So it could have been worse, but still, it was very bad. And I just, I have that in mind when I read information about floodplain.
So I'm going to go to the counselors that are online, Counselor Newton or Counselor McGee, do you have anything? Newton Azar, excuse me.
Sorry, I had to give myself a moment. Questions right now, and I know we even had recent flooding, I believe, back in like 2018. I don't know how bad it was in 1996, but yeah, anything we can do.
Counselor McGee.
Counselor Novak actually asked my question, so.
You haven't asked her?
About why we were getting the update.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
We have photos online of the 96 flood, don't we?
Correct, yeah.
So you have a comment? Is that it?
That's it.
Counselor Novak.
Thank you. So at first, when I was looking at these options, I thought, well, first of all, why would anyone put utilities or build anything in a floodplain? And then as I continued to read, I discovered that FEMA considers an area of special flood hazard as the land in the floodplain within a community subject to a 1% or greater chance of flooding in any given year. 1%? 1%? You can't develop anything if you're afraid that there's a 1% chance that there might be a flood. I was here in 96, I remember 96. I've been here since 1970, you know? It would be foolhardy, I agree, to build where we flooded badly, which I would say by the river, North Albany, those are areas that are not a great place to build out. And I did think at first about not considering the permit-by-permit basis, because who wants to make more work for staff, and that would be more work. But if you follow the, because my initial thought, as I said, was, well, don't build in a floodplain. But their definition of a floodplain is anywhere that there might be 1% chance or greater in a given year. Does that sound ridiculous to anyone but me? 1% chance? You could almost put a flood in the Sahara at a 1% chance. So that's not my only issue. There's another one, because I do think we need a new definition of a floodplain. A floodplain realistically and accurately, how do they come up with a 1% chance? And here they say on page 30, 3.7.1, "The degree of flood protection required by this ordinance is considered reasonable for regulatory purposes and is based on scientific and engineering considerations." Well, I would like to see some of those scientific and engineering considerations before November 18, if you would, if you can get them. Because I don't know what kind of science says that a 1% chance of a flood in any given year merits this big insurance thing for which you have to comply and make sure you won't kill a tree, no negative impact. I just, the more I read, the more ridiculous this whole thing got. Pardon the grammar. So I wanted to verify also, Jennifer, did you say you are the floodplain administrator? That is you? Did I hear that correctly?
I'm the manager.
So who's the administrator? Would it be our city manager?
That would be my boss, Matthew.
Oh, Matt, okay, Mr. Rettgers, you are the floodplain administrator. Thank you. That's going to be important to know, because again, the further I read, the more I thought, this just doesn't even make sense. And then when I got to page 92 and discovered that this is actually about, the whole point here isn't about saving a tree or a fish egress or any of that. This is all about the recommendation, not just a recommendation, mind you, but the bottom-line point here is increased density. Don't build anywhere where there's a 1% chance that there might be a big rain. Instead, put everything as tightly together and as high up as you can, and force the density, because we can't build in a floodplain. There's a 1% chance in any given year that there might be a flood. So don't build anywhere where it's reasonable to build, where we don't have big floods, perhaps East Albany or wherever, I don't know. But I don't know. As I say, I'm just looking at this closely, and the further I get, the more I question, absolutely, even the validity of what FEMA is putting forward here. Because I would really like to see their science and their engineering considerations. I'm sure 1% is perfect and reasonable to the government for regulatory purposes, because who doesn't like a good regulation? But it doesn't make sense in terms of trying to live in a city, run a city, grow a city, if you will, for everyone who's really big on lots of growth. How do you do that when most of your town is possibly 1% in a given year going to flood? I just.
Director, do you have a response?
Well, I would just remind the council, as we look at these regulations, is understanding that the floodplain is defined by FEMA and the FEMA mapping on the NFIP, so National Flood Insurance Program. So if you look at, and everybody can look at our Info Hub site and actually turn on that SFA or Special Flood Hazard Area, which is the 1% that you're referring to, and it's really concentrated around our rivers and major channels. To your point, Counselor Novak, there isn't a lot of this that's in, I mean, you look at downtown, that's not in the SFA, so that 1% area. There are some pockets in North Albany, especially on the east side of Spring Hill Road. A lot of those neighborhoods are in that floodplain. And there are some areas in East Albany as well as South Albany that are concentrated around our major drainages. Oak Creek is a really great example of that, and that SFA extends just a little bit outside of that. So, you know, it's a very, when I say the impact is limited, it's easy to say that when you're looking at the big picture, but obviously, if you're a person that owns a piece of property that's in that SFA and want to, say, replace an AC unit or do an additional to your house or something like that, that's where that, we have to remember, that is an impact to that property. So when we're, we and yourselves included in this, looking at the options that are given, whether it be the model ordinance or the case-by-case basis, that's kind of, we're keeping that in mind, is understanding that this is dealing with a pretty limited amount of the land area inside of the city limits proper. So it's not this, in applying this regulation, it's not going to necessarily hinder a ton of development, because most of the areas that would be developed in that special flood hazard area, the 1%, the major developments have been done already. So it's, as regulations have gotten stricter and stricter and stricter over time, which they tend to do, this is just another example of that. So it is dealing with just these pockets around our major drainages. So it's, I'm not sure if we can even pull up kind of the map, if that's easy, Jennifer.
While we're waiting for that, Counselor, can I just get?
That's exactly what I was going to suggest, and you, we went by it pretty quickly, the map that you showed us, what the floodplain flood areas were. It is pretty spelled out.
I just take issue with FEMA's definition being so insanely broad. Anywhere where a 1% chance of a flood in any given year, to me, that's just ridiculous. I want to see the science and the environmental studies on that.
There we go. So you can see the area in light blue there, any of the areas in light blue, that is that SFA or Special Flood Hazard Area, that 1% chance. So for the lion's share of the City of Albany is not in that area. It's really concentrated around our major channels. Mr. Novak?
So the red line is the urban growth boundary, correct?
Yeah, that kind of redish-purple line is the UGB. The dashed line you see inside of that is the city limits. As you see up in North Albany, those are one and the same.
So in the North Albany area, there's an awful lot of blue, and I'm wondering if that encompasses your projected climate-friendly zone for North Albany. Is that in the floodplain as well?
There are portions of the CFA, which is concentrated right around that Hickory Village area, where the, let's see, well, yeah, the IGA and things like that is, that's part of that CFA. The CFA doesn't go any farther north, I'm picturing it in my mind, it doesn't go anywhere north of the tracks that are out there.
So you're sure that that is an area that's not going to be subject to huge flooding, because North Albany does flood every now and again, like it did in 96?
So the areas that are in blue are indicated as in that 1% chance.
Right.
Now, what these regulations will do, it doesn't, unless the prohibit option is selected, it doesn't necessarily prohibit the chance of development in those areas. It just heightens the regulations around that, to where you'd have to provide mitigation, compensatory storage. So if you add fill-in, then you're having to basically create holes or pockets that, when water comes in, it's got a place to go, so that you've created this no-net loss of flood storage, if that makes sense.
Well, a little bit it does, but I just think that would be an area not to build. That would be an area not to develop.
Generally, when.
In a floodplain, in a legitimate floodplain, don't build there. Build somewhere else. But if it's a 1% chance, I don't see how that's a floodplain.
Yeah, and that's, you know, we don't get to determine where the.
I know.
The 1% is.
I know.
This is, as we look at these regulations, we're trying to make, we all are trying to make, providing you the information so that we can make the best decision for our community, understanding that, you know, we may not feel that the 1% is fair, but, you know, there is data behind where it is, and it's not this massive extent that encompasses all of the city. It is these pockets that are primarily surrounding lowlands next to bodies of water. And one of the particular challenges when we talk about these regulations is understanding things like our wastewater treatment plant that is water-dependent and needs to be located next to a river. If you look at our mapping, a good portion of that plant is down in that 1% zone. So as we're looking at these options, that proposes some pretty challenging scenarios.
Yeah, well, it's already there. It's been there for 100 years, so, you know.
Thank you, Director. So we'll see you in November?
Yep, if there's no more questions.
Did you get what you needed from us?
This was just an informational session. As we're getting information, albeit delayed, we're trying to make sure that we're keeping you in the loop. As we get the information, we'll come back in November. We may even have even more information at that point, some answers to your questions. And then at that, we're hoping to kind of pick a direction at that stage, in that November meeting on the 18th, I think it is, or some guidance on directions so that we can go to work in adjusting development code or whatever we're going to do, so.
Thank you, Director. Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Do you have one more comment?
Just want to, one of the information sessions at the League of Oregon Cities Conference last week was on this very topic. So I'm guessing we're not alone.
We are absolutely not alone. I think the slide that Jennifer had actually showed that there's 31 of Oregon's.
36 counties.
36 counties.
And then all the included cities within each county.
And those are counties, and then there's 250-some cities that are impacted by these new regulations. And when we look at the bigger picture, you know, Albany is, the impacts to Albany, while it's still an impact compared to some communities over on the coast, that the impacts can be almost county-wide, it's pretty dramatic, so.
Thank you. Next on tonight's agenda is business from the council. I'll start this way and come this direction. Counselor Novak?
Me first again. Okay, I guess this is the last meeting we're having before the elections, so I want to note publicly that I am grateful that the City of Lebanon has put to the vote of their citizens whether or not they want to consider. or not they want to consider ending putting fluoride in their water. There are new rulings regarding fluoridation. It is a proven neurotoxic substance, and I want to just hearken back to when I took our tour in May. I was with councilors Kopczynski and Montague, and we toured the facilities. And when we were in Millersburg, the gentleman who was giving the tour stopped outside the door marked fluoride and said, "We're not going in here." And I said, "Well, you do realize that that substance, that particular fluoride that you're putting in our water is not medical grade." And he said, "No, no, it's food grade." And I thought to myself, and I didn't say it out loud right then, but I'm saying it out loud now, if it is food grade, why is the person putting it in our water wearing a hazmat suit? It can eat a hole right through the concrete. So I just, again, want to bring this to the attention of people who might be considering putting this to a vote in the future. And again, I'm very grateful that at least the people of Lebanon have an option to weigh in on whether they want this proven neurotoxin in their water. And we'll see how that plays out. But I do know that since the ruling proving the neurotoxicity of fluoride has come out recently, there are a number of cities that have already begun the process or halted the addition of fluoride to the water. So I can only hope that one day Albany will be on that same page. Thank you.
Counselor Montague?
I have nothing.
Counselor Smith?
Two things today. As I mentioned earlier, several of us attended the League of Oregon Cities Conference in Bend last week. It was the largest statewide conference they had ever had. It was extremely educational. There was a half-day session on the opening day, a workshop for councilors about how to communicate with each other, with the public, the public's role and rights in addressing the council, a smattering of lawsuits across the country that affect how we do business or may do business in the future. Very, very educational. The information should be online, but I'm very glad I attended it. I learned a lot and found out that we are doing, well, I find this out a lot, we are doing a lot of the things that people are being instructed to do or suggested to do, such as posting our rules of conduct in various places in this room and outside the room, online, and on our agenda. All of the, our requirements and expectations for speaking to the council by the public are online. We're ahead of the game in a lot of ways, and we treat members of the public with respect, and they know our expectations, and we have expectations of them before they ever come in the building. So there was that. Also, at the conference was the annual membership meeting for the Women's Caucus, and in the middle of same, as we were preparing our final slate of officers for a vote, the power went out, and the entire conference center, and anybody who's attended a conference in a big conference center knows that there's no natural light in most of those rooms, so it was pretty dark in there. But we, with the light of our iPhones, we finished our nominations, we took our vote, and I was elected vice president of the caucus for 2025. It's a great organization. I would love to talk fellow councilors into being a part of that. Hint, hint. Also had a conversation this week with a member of the Human Relations Commission who had said that she had noticed that members of the council and members of the staff often refer to citizens of Albany, and as being the people that we serve. And wanted to remind us, as I used to do, and haven't done it for a while, that we serve not only citizens, but we serve all of the residents of Albany. Residents is a broader term, and it's more accurate and more inclusive. And so I would like people to keep that in mind when they're talking or writing about city business. Thank you for your time.
Counselor Newton Azar?
I don't have anything at this time. Just a reminder, we'll talk about it tomorrow on Wednesday, just to do your research and get your ballot in by November 15th.
Thank you. Counselor McGee?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Counselor Kopczynski?
Nothing this evening.
Thank you. I just had one thing, a couple things, but I'll do the rest on Wednesday night. I attended the LLC as well, and I was on a panel of mayors that discussed community engagement, community relationships, and my slide set went up, and I had my mushroom, and people had seen it. So Albany's reach, people are paying attention to what we're doing. Our Downtown Association, our Chamber of Commerce, and our Visitor Association do a great job of getting us out there. So I was happy to see they'd pulled pictures off from my slides, and so I appreciate the work that you guys do on behalf of Albany. And the conversation was really good around, you know, going out in the community, going to events, saying thank you to people for coming to town. And a lot of mayors approached me and said, "I'm too nervous about doing that." And it was because I had 25 years' experience of being a football official, it's, I'm used to being out there. So I said, "Just do me a favor, just talk to your Chamber of Commerce president, talk to your visitor association, talk to your Downtown Association, and have them go for a walk with you, just to get into practice of being out there." So a lot of mayors are thinking about doing some things like that. But other than that, I had a great weekend, the trip over there was great. I'll turn it over to the city manager for his report.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just have one thing, and that is that we do have one more meeting before the election, that's this Wednesday evening.
Wednesday, duh. Okay, I forgot, sorry.
And I wanted to assure our citizens and residents that while the council certainly can make a decision about fluoridation, fluoridation as it's conducted now is entirely within the standards of health and safety standards established by health authorities and the FDA. Anything in large concentrations can be hazardous. So that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I will adjourn today's meeting, and I will see you this Wednesday evening at 6:00 PM here for our city council meeting, and have a great evening. Thank you much.